Okay, all right, welcome everybody to the Town of Waterboro Planning Board Meeting for October fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Angela, can we start with roll call?
Rebecca Higginson.
Here.
Rebecca Higgins.
Here.
Diane Wright.
Here.
Joe Briscoe.
Here.
Stacy Walker is not in attendance this evening.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda, we have the public hearing for the F A A R zone amendment proposal, Stephen Everett. So, um, Mr. Everett will have you do a little brief overview. I know things have changed since the last meeting, um, due to state law that has passed. So, um, Mr. Everett will give his kind of updated proposal. Michaela's gonna do a presentation that will give an overview of the state law changes and then that will kind of help us, lead us into the public hearing where, where people can speak. Um, we just ask that you come up to the podium, uh, name an address and, uh, keep your, uh, comments brief so that we can get through it to everybody tonight. So, Mr. Everett?
Well, good evening. Uh, if you attended the last meeting, um, you probably noticed that I was ambushed up here. I didn't have a lot of support for my proposal. This time, I'm hoping it'll be a little different. I decided to not eliminate a zone, just change the density criteria and set back requirements for, uh, the F and A zone. To me, it's, it's, uh, pretty restrictive. And there should be possibly some people that I've invited to come and speak on my behalf, although I don't see anybody yet, but somebody's on the way. And all I'm really trying to do is make people or give the opportunity to people that live and have lived in these areas, an opportunity to be a little bit more flexible and to possibly earn a little more income from their land. My proposal is to reduce the lot size from five acres to a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, which is three acres more or less. So, uh, the lot sizes could be cut in half. I propose that the, uh, side and front setbacks reflect the A and R zone, which is a fit, which is a seventy-five foot front setback and a thirty-five foot side setback, where currently it's a hundred feet in the front and fifty feet on the sides. This, just to give a little more flexibility, uh, trying to, trying to fit, uh, a buildable, uh, structure on some of these lots is, uh, very challenging because of those setbacks. And for those of you who are going to speak, I, I would really like to hear the negative, 'cause I'm not, I'm not seeing it. I, 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 I look at the town of, of Lymington or Limerick and they, three quarters of that town has a minimum lot size of an acre and a half. And that, to me, is still considered a pretty rural town. So there's gotta be something else going on here that I'm not quite understanding. So if you could address the downside of this, um, and reading through this info package, they keep bringing up, well, does it follow the comprehensive plan? Well, the comprehensive plan has not been updated for a long time, ten years, and I, I think it needs to be, doesn't it?
It should be updated about every two years.
Yeah, and I know that that's a, that's a long process. Uh, so this is, this is a, this is kind of a, just something that I thought would be relatively easy to do, to give the residents that live in the F and A zone a little more freedom to subdivide. Now, this, the, uh, the L D eighteen twenty-nine, and I don't know all, all of the details, uh, but that, that's being mandated by the state of Maine. I don't believe that addresses lot size. It just talks about legal lots and how many ADUs you can put on a legal lot. This addresses w- lot size and where you can place a structure on that lot. So, that's my presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we'll just start with some of the basics in case anyone wasn't able to join for the last one. Um, this proposal, as Steve said, is to amend some dimensional standards in the forest and agriculture zone. It does not propose any changes in use. So the, uh, prohibited uses remain the same, the allowed uses remain the same. Um, but the proposal does, as Steve said, reduce the minimum lot size from five acres to a hundred and twenty thousand square feet and then reduce the front-side setbacks and the front, uh, the road frontage requirement. And if you want to find this language for yourself, you can look in the Town of Waterboro zoning ordinance. Article one, the introduction, explains the amendment process. And then Article three is where the zoning districts are. And you can look at the summary of dimensional regulations and also the forest and agriculture district, uh, regulations, if you want to look into that yourself. Uh, next. Okay, so this is, uh, on the left is the existing zoning map for the Town of Waterboro, so it's what you currently have. The lime green is the forest and agriculture district. So on the right, it's just showing that, um, the only changes in this amendment would affect the forest and agriculture district. And it would just, again, be some changes to the regulation, but not wholesale. So this is a different proposal than, uh, what was brought before the board previously. Next. Okay, so this is the existing dimensional regulations. Um, the forest and agriculture section is highlighted in green there. It's a little bit faint, but, uh, next. Those four are the, uh, proposed changes. So the minimum lot size, the road frontage, the setbacks for the front and side and rear. Next. And those are the proposed changes. So you'll see it, um, the forest and agriculture zone would remain larger than the agriculture and residential zone for minimum lot size, but have the same setbacks and road frontage. Next. Okay, so this is just getting into a bit of the process for zone amendments. So, per the ordinance, um, the applicant, Steve, had to present, uh, the amendment to the town council and they forwarded it to the planning board. Um, he appeared before the planning board and then we scheduled this public hearing. So today, we're hosting this public hearing. And then we'll have the, uh, the, uh, floor open for public comments, uh, in a little bit. And then, uh, following that, the planning board votes on a recommendation to the town council. The planning board themselves does not approve or not approve this. They just give a recommendation and then the town council will hold a public hearing and, uh, vote on the proposed amendment. Next. So typi-
Who votes, the town council or we?
The town council. So typically, um, when we're evaluating zone amendments, the way we go about this is we update a comprehensive plan, because that's the community's vision for what you want. And then we update the land use ordinances to reflect that vision in the comprehensive plan. So the question we have to ask whenever we make an ordinance, uh, amendment or update is, does the proposed amendment align with the comprehensive plan? And the answer has to be yes, in order for that, uh, amendment to go forward. Things to know, and as Steve alluded to, this comp plan, uh, is ten years old. It was last updated in twenty fifteen and, um, updating it is something the town's starting to talk about, um, needing to do. So, we do know that it's an older plan. Um, and most relevant to looking at ordinance changes for comprehensive plan are their future land use chapter and for this, also the open spaces and natural resource chapters. So I'll look into that yourself. Uh, next. So, um, in your future land use section of your comprehensive plan, it kind of talks about Waterboro in different sections. So it talks about, um, North Waterboro as being a more rural area that should, uh, focus on natural resources and farmland. And, and it asks the question, should zoning district requirements and/or boundaries be changed to better address certain natural and human-made resources? Next. Um, and it points out that the section of Waterboro has the largest vacant tracts of both private and public land use, uh, in the town. And that this area of town really needs to think about what your destiny is in terms of, uh, interest and where and how rural characteristics can be maintained, while preserving or, uh, introducing light commercial and agrarian uses. So, these are some of the things that are in your existing comprehensive plan. Next. Um, and this talks about open space and what ruralness means to Waterboro. And it, uh, recommends that the planning board and planning department look at the use of cluster zoning and compact mixed-use zoning as a conservation technique. Next. Okay, so that's kind of the, the proposal and the comp plan and how that all relates together. Um, now we're gonna get into a little bit of new state legislation, L D eighteen twenty-nine, that was passed in June and what it means to Waterboro. And, um, today, we're specifically gonna talk about what it means for the F and A zone. There are other impacts that it has for other zones and, uh, some of the impacts are quite different for different zones. But because the F and A zone is a more rural zone, there's less impacts to it from this bill than, um, some of your other zones. But for right now, we'll, we'll focus on, on this one. So, overall, this legislation basically overrides municipal land use authority. It prescribes certain things that zones have to do, certain dimensional requirements and, uh, certain residential uses, um, that zones have to have in municipalities. So, the, the main things, um, that impacts the forest and agriculture zone are that every, um, legal lot has to allow three residential units per the lot. So, um, L D two thousand and three, you might remember from a few years ago, changed, uh, and prescribed two units per lot. And now, L D eighteen twenty-nine, it's three units per lot, um, for the F and A zone, because it is a non-growth area. Another thing that it changed is, it, this law specifies that you cannot require additional dimensional requirements for multifamily, uh, residential as compared to single-family residential. So, for example, um, if your current ordinance says you need, um, a hundred feet for road frontage for, um, a single-family home, um, you could, your, before this law, you could require a hundred square feet of road frontage per every unit that you add to a buildable lot. So if you had three units on the buildable lot, you could require three times the road frontage or three hundred feet. But now, you cannot do that. So if your road frontage is a hundred feet, or in this case, the F and A zone is two hundred feet right now, then it will stay two hundred feet, um, even if you put a triplex, which it could be a three-unit, um, on a lot. So, um, that's one major change and that change will be true throughout every zone. And then, uh, the third major bucket for the F and A zone is about accessory dwelling units. In the previous law, you had to allow them everywhere, so they're already allowed in the F and A zone. But, um, this law specifies that they're not limited to single-family homes only. So if there's a duplex or townhomes on a lot, they are also allowed to have, uh, an ADU. It also says that you cannot require an owner to live either on, um, or either in the ADU or the primary dwelling. So the owner can, doesn't have to live on the property itself for it to be an ADU, which is, um, different than in the past. Next. Um, okay, so tho- that was kind of like the broader overview and then this slide just has a few more details. So, um, about each of those three facets of change. So, um, yeah, the first three units per lot, so in the current F and A zone, that would be about one unit per one point six acres if every property owner chose to allow up to three units per lot. But again, they don't have to, it's up to, uh, the property owner. Um, about the second set of requirements, about the additional dimensional requirements, um, yeah, I guess I did, I went over that already, that example, so we're good there. And then for accessory dwelling units, um, they can be attached or detached to a multifamily unit. And again, you cannot require the owner to live on the property. So, those are the three major buckets for, uh, impacts to this zone from that law. Next, I think that's it?
That's it.
Yeah, that's it. So, those are the major changes and I'm happy to speak more about the legislative stuff. But overall, it doesn't impact the F and A zone too much compared to, at least in terms of comparing it to how L D two thousand and three already kind of changed what, what can be allowed or not.
Can we ask for a clarification?
Sure.
When you say dimensional requirements, does that also include setback?
Yes.
If Mr. Everett's talking about total space as well as setback?
Yes, yeah.
So, under L D eighteen twenty-nine, the setback requirements for three units going on a, previously two-unit property remain the same?
Yes, yeah, so you couldn't require three times as much front setback for a three-unit as you could for a single-family? Yes.
Could I ask for another point of clarification?
Sure.
When you say, um, three units per lot, what could, what does, what constitutes a unit? Are we talking about three dwelling units in one building? Or are we talking about three separate buildings?
Either or. So just a dis- a distinct area for living. You, you, like kitchen, living room, you know, bedroom is usually the bare minimum for a dwelling unit. So whether that's attached, detached, separate? Yeah.
Thank you.
Did I just come up with this stuff?
I just need to know, can, yeah.
Did you just get these?
Uh, Mark Salati, more areas of focus.
David McReese?
Thank you. If we could just, anybody further?
Yeah, I'm coming.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. So, Mr. Salati, now that I know you're here, do you still, would you like me to read your email out loud or are you going?
I'd, I'd prefer to, to speak if I have.
That's perfect. Okay.
I like to talk.
Would you, um, would you like to go ahead?
Uh, if you want me to.
Yeah.
You want outside?
Oh, I thought it was already open. Thought I opened it.
I don't think we, oh.
Oh, okay.
Because we had him and then me.
Oh, okay, so now it's open to, okay.
Yeah.
There you go. From Alan.
Thank you. Firstly, I'm sorry, Mr. Everett felt ambushed. Um, I, and, and in talking about, uh, you, you wasn't sure about downsides. I heard a lot of downsides explained in the last meeting and that was my take away. With eighteen twenty-nine coming in and just to kind of summarize my email to the council, I kind of feel like this is putting the cart before the horse. We've got a lot of zoning changes that are affecting every, uh, any place where, if I'm clear, any lot that allows residential is effectively covered under eighteen twenty-nine.
Yes.
Yeah, every one of them. Yeah, so it's not just F and A, it's not A and R, it's village, it's pretty much everybody. Um, so I, I kind of feel like, um, and probably regrettably from Mr. Everett's point of view, to consider this right now, it's, is sort of a little bit illogical. I know we, we've talked about eighteen twenty-nine, but it might be useful for us to understand the timeline, 'cause when I read through it, I couldn't quite understand if it had to be done by twenty-six or twenty-seven. So, you can pick that one out after if you want. Um, I don't necessarily have as much strength of feeling around this one, um, that I, that I had about the further one. There's no changes to usage, which I think is helpful. I think it probably just bears repeating in the minutes that a lot of us bought those properties because we want the rural character. And by allowing even this change to it, it will change the rural character. Having said that, we are all now subject to the law called L D eighteen twenty-nine. That's all, thank you.
Anybody else to speak?
Teresa Lowell, I'm on Middle Road. Um, I was at the prior meeting and I have to tell you, this room was overflowing. Seats were taken, people were standing and everyone that evening, uh, spoke that they were adamant that the minimum lot size should not be reduced and provided diversity of reasons as to why. I would like to request the record of this hearing, reiterate those public comments to retain the current zoning parameters and include them as part of tonight's record. The introductory page of tonight's meeting provides rationale to uphold the minimum requirement of five acres and with the recommendations of our planning staff. The Town Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use defines the vision and value of this land in question. Decreasing lot size will only exacerbate rural sprawl and we need to target this growth to village areas. Growth is better planned in close proximity to schools, town services, as fire department and rescue, public water supply in certain areas of town and, uh, focused transportation of development along primary, secondary, and state aid roads. Our ordinance states these are lacking in the F A zone. The F A zone definition provides additional rationale for a five-acre minimum. The topography, soils, slope, and surface water within the zone limits the location of a building envelope. To further reduce the minimum lot size to three acres will only restrict property owners of three acres their desired building site location for well and wastewater. It's already a challenge on some lots to have a suitable building site because of the topography and such. Just because a piece of property is for sale is not a promise of desired land use. And, uh, buyers need to be aware of that. The North Waterboro F A zone is a transitional zone, a buffer to our largest conservation zone, which has a ten-acre minimum, largely surrounded by Middle Road, Osiphe Hill, Ross Corner, Clark's Bridge, and Bagley Roads, preserving habitat for wildlife, vernal ponds and pools, and limited land use. Any reduction of lot size and property setbacks decreases property value of myself and others in the affected area. This could prompt, uh, requests for property tax adjustment. A reduction of minimum lot size will amplify development density within our rural areas. As previously mentioned, increasing the rural sprawl. This will, in turn, raise costs of public services, fire, rescue, public works, which is road maintenance, snow removal, waste services, and school funding. I'm not opposed to the reduction of the road and shoreland frontage from two hundred feet to a hundred and fifty feet, the opinion of the Waterboro planning staff. I agree with their recommendation not to support the other three requests, the reduction of lot size, roads, road, front road setback, north side and rear setbacks. I encourage the planning board to follow the recommendation of the Waterboro planning staff and consider all public comments tonight, as well as those from June eighteenth. The residents that spoke on June eighteenth were adamant they do not want this zoning change. And furthermore, with the passage of L D eighteen twenty-nine, that is the downside. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Couple of questions. Thank you. Rod DeMayo, two twenty-six, uh, East Shore Road. Couple of clarif- clarifications. Right now, the F A is a five-acre zone, correct? In the reduction size to a three-acre, would it still be considered a five-a, uh, F A? Or would it be turned into a residential? Being or a three-A? So right now, you have a five-acre, you're allowed to put three units on it, correct? Uh, with the new, with the new?
Yes, with the new, you would be a three.
Okay, and if we, if it was reduced to a three-acre, is that three-acre still considered F A or is, does that go into a residential? So in other words, if they reduced it to three acres, would they still be able to put the three units on that?
Yes.
So we're not changing the clarification of the F A zone, we're just reducing the size of it.
Yes.
So would an alternative be to change, if they decided to change the F A the minimum of five acres? Like, that portion that you were discussing, I'm not that familiar with the area, but looking at the, uh, the plot. The section that we were talking about is with the wildlife and everything. And that's, you can pretty much look at the plan, you can see that's all farming, it hasn't been developed at all. Could that stay F A? And then the other F A be reduced to three acres and change it from F A zoning to A R zone?
Uh, so-
A R is two acres, isn't it?
So you could create a new zone that, um, is basically some regulations from A and R and some regulations from F A and define a new area. That is something you can do. Um, and then leave other parts of F A exactly as they are. Um, that, that is one strategy.
The, the, the reason I bring it up is because when you had the, the drawing up there of the, the zoning map?
Yeah.
So the one to the right, you can see where the proposed changes are, on both sides.
Yeah.
So this side here, there's been hardly any development at all, and I agree. But on this side here, if you really look at what's been developed in here, when you look at these lot sizes, a lot of these lots are, are less than five acres or anything. So what are we really proposing to change on this side? There's, I, I think there's a minimum amount. Whereas if you were able to break it into, you would be able to say, this stays F A and this will create a new zoning of a three-acre lots.
Just, yeah, you have the ability to bring the map back up?
I think that's one of the reasons why I brought up the comp planning process in the first place is 'cause I think there is room for different ideas like this. But the, the process should be that, that occurs over like a year and a half long process where we have meetings that really deep dive into those options with the residents. And so then we can figure out the direction to take the ordinance. I think it's hard to, to do the more creative solutions like you're saying in a one-off ordinance amendment without the, the full process before it.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll just bring the map back up so you can just kind of show what we're here.
Yeah.
So if we're looking at this map, you're talking about-
Yeah, so as I was saying, if you look to the right, where it says, the top right corner, it says proposed changes. And if you look on the left, you can see that there really hasn't been developed that much. It's a lot of, uh, vacant land. But on the left side, if you look at all those lines, those are all individual lots.
Right.
And I, I'm surmising, I could be wrong, but I would have to say that probably two-thirds of those are under the five acres. They've already been-
It's a bit deceptive. I can tell you, I have a Pluxbridge Road, I can't reach that high, but there's a kind of, they look kind of-
But there's a kind of, they look kind of small, but mine's eleven acres.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think that's, I'm sure it happens.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're on the, you're on the left hand side though.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, so I think where you're talking about, that's Chadbourne Ridge Road, right? Am I correct?
Yes, the top right.
The top right. So that's Chadbourne Ridge Road kind of area, past Arrowhead, out through there is kind of what we're talking about. This section of the map up there.
Yeah, exactly. Now, that's, believe me, that's a good example of Chadbourne Ridge Road.
Right, yeah.
That goes from AR to FA within one lot. Because I just purchased a lot up there on Chadbourne Ridge, and it's a two acre lot. Everything behind me is all five acres. So that's where I'm saying, if you look along that stretch, you'll see that a lot of those lots are AR zoning. So maybe there's a compromise that you could come up with on that side, not the right side, but on that side, and say that maybe we can come up with doing a three acre lot. And as she said, re categorizing it into a new zoning area. Just food for thought. Thank you.
Can I make a point?
Sure. Can you just come up to the podium, please?
I just wanted to point to the area.
Okay.
Everything that's on this side
Yep.
in the line green is five acre zone, regardless of what it looks like.
Correct.
It's a five acre zone.
Correct.
Correct.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is a lot of those lots, looking at that drawing, they're smaller than five acres.
Like if we, if we?
That's not in the line green.
No.
So where it says Shapley, and it has all those individual lot lines there, those are larger than five acres?
They're just two hundred foot minimum road frontage.
Okay, yeah.
And long.
So it is deceiving then, it just seems?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
One of those big towns, a big map.
Yeah.
Respond to that?
Where is that all to the left of West Road? That all of those?
If it's in, if it's in AR, it's going to be five acres, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, West Road runs up just to the bottom of that lake. Right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are all five acres.
Those are all five acres there.
I was just looking on the person there.
Okay, so it is deceiving. So where is that? Is that somewhere down Blueberry?
No, it's Lake Sherburne.
No, it's Lake Sherburne. That's West Road right before Ross Corner, or Ross Corner's just on the edge of the map right there.
Right, so there's a lot of lots that are well over the five acres.
Yes.
So that means that if you're reducing it?
You gotta come to the microphone.
If you could come to the microphone.
So this, so this clarifies things that there is a lot of these lots are well over the five acres. Right, so now if you're going to reduce to three acres approximately, you're allowing a lot of subdivision. It's not just every lot is five acres, so they can't really change. Right?
Well, I think when you get into subdivision, you've got a whole nother?
I don't mean, I mean, you're allowing a three acres. So now if someone has a lot that's six acres, they can split that in half?
Correct.
The changes.
Correct. If this change were to be?
If this change were to be?
Yes.
And if they had nine acres, they could make three lots? There's a lot, there's a lot of big lots there. So we're talking about a major change again.
You'd still have to have the frontage though, correct?
Correct, yes.
But the frontage now, the one eighteen twenty, it's double jeopardy here.
Yes.
Right, nine to three times three on the same road frontage, and those three can now have three.
Correct.
Yeah, but those are, but those are?
Triple jeopardy.
If I understand that correctly, it's, it's three units on one lot, they can't be, they can't be sold off individually.
Yes, they can.
They can't.
They can be condoized.
They can be condoized, yeah.
They can be condoized. They can.
So what is your name?
But if you allow this change that Mr. Everett is proposing?
I don't allow any change. I'm just a staff.
Yeah, yeah. That's my reason, if you come up with a new zoning, you don't have to worry about the three units being built on it. Do you know what I'm saying? So if you have a five acre lot?
No, what I'm saying is I'm agreeing with your eloquent speak there, nobody wanted it to change.
No, not even before LD eighteen twenty-nine, and this LD eighteen twenty-nine?
This is just another way around for you to get more business.
Some people do.
Sir, okay, sir.
I don't, I don't see it that way. I look at it as though if you have a five acre lot, now you can put three units on it.
Yeah.
Where if?
Well, no, I'm not talking about the LD, I'm talking about your proposal to lower it to three acres.
I see what you're saying there.
A lot of those lots are a lot bigger than, as you see now.
Correct.
Bigger, so that means there can be quite a few new lots, correct?
There will be more lots.
Correct, absolutely.
A lot of work for a surveyor.
How many, and how much? I'm not looking for more work at this time.
So what is your, your point in this?
My point is, I survey?
Us disrupting the way that we're living here.
Well, I don't see it that way.
Obviously you don't, but all the people?
I've done a lot of surveying on Middle Road, on Chadbourne Ridge Road, and a lot of the people that I, that I talk to, they, they, they don't understand?
Where's your petition? How many names do you have?
I have not.
How many signatures do you have of Water Borough residents that want this change?
I have not gone that route yet. That's why I wanted to create a referendum, just to put it out for vote.
Well, that's, that's the problem, this isn't coming out to vote then. It's not coming out to a public vote.
Not, not at this time.
No, ever, it won't ever. You said, you said, when I asked before, you said the town council votes. You said the citizens don't vote.
Yes, but they're going to listen to what the townspeople are saying here and the prior public hearing. All of this is getting recorded, and I agree with what you're saying. One thing, real quick, we need your name, sir.
Richard Basile.
Thank you. Dwayne, can you, since you're here, can you just speak to the next step? So after the recommendation, you guys would hold your public hearing?
Correct.
Chances are, it's going to go to referendum if you guys move in that direction.
And the board has the right to change the zoning under the new charter. But they also have the right to put anything they feel is a major change to the referendum. So it's up to the five member board to decide whether they want this to be voted on or to go to a referendum. Myself, I don't want to make the choice of nine thousand people. I would rather send it to referendum, and I'm only one vote. And I would push, believe me, to send it to referendum so that everybody has got the right to say on it. But I'm only one vote. So I can't, I, tonight I can't tell you because we haven't brought it up. It was sent to us, and we sent it to the planning board to hold this public hearing and, and to work on it. And then it will, after they get done, they'll send it back to us. We'll have a public hearing and then decide how we're going to handle it. So I mean, if it got done, it could go to voting, you know?
So how many people have to say they don't like this idea for you just to crush it right now? That's what happened last time, the last meeting.
Yeah.
So I think the earlier question that I asked about when does LD eighteen twenty-nine come into effect is really prescient at the moment because it seems like the choice we're talking about is three units on five acres or three units on three acres?
It comes into effect for you all since you changed your charter, July of twenty twenty-six. So sooner than?
It has to be implemented by July twenty-six.
Or on July twenty-sixth?
I'm sorry?
On July twenty-sixth.
Yes, yes.
That's probably.
Yeah, council could even put it ahead, but no, that won't happen.
No, I appreciate it, it's a very complex thing. Hurry up.
They just, one, they ain't going to push it ahead until we see what goes on here, so, you know?
But that's putting the three, the LD, putting the three units. That isn't three units that can be sold.
Correct, so?
That's not three separate units per se.
Well, correct and not correct, so the, the minimum lot size has to be maintained. So if it's a five acre lot in the F and A zone, they can put three units on it, but they cannot divide those into three separate lots. However, they can condoize the units, so there can be three owners of the three residential units but jointly own the land, or it can be one owner who rents out the other two properties. If the lot is bigger than the minimum lot size, then you can divide the land. But then the new, the new lots that met the minimum lot size could each have the three units per the lot.
Right.
Or it could be clustered developed.
Yeah.
If you had a, we'll say you had sixty acres up there in the F and A, you could develop less than ten acres of that sixty and still end up with all them houses. But it's going to be in a, a smaller circle, and you're not going to build anywhere near the drives or have the entrances coming off a major highway. Good points and bad points in that. I mean, you got more houses, you got less entrances, you haven't got the roads to maintain.
Well, I don't think it's good for us. I mean, have you been, have you been in that one down on Wells on Route one oh nine?
Oh, yeah.
Do you want that here?
Yeah.
You don't want that here, do you?
No, no, but that's the, that's your turnaround zone there.
So it's a good point raised as well, and Mr. Everett talks about Lexington. We don't live in Lexington, we live here.
Yeah.
So I don't really care what goes on in Lexington. I care what goes on here. So there's a downside for you.
Well, again, as much as we can do to preserve the rural character, which would mean not changing.
Anybody else want to speak? Okay.
My name is Tom Smith. I live on Lake Sherburne. I grew up in Arundel, which used to be a small town in the nineties and early two thousands. Now, it's not a small town. And about ten years ago, me and my wife bought our house in Water Borough, looking to get back to that rural feel. Now, the biggest thing with this is, like last meeting was stated, talking about forty percent of Water Borough. It's not a small zone, it's forty percent of the town. Okay, so that's, it's big. And then we got this new, you know, the state coming in and doing their thing with LD eighteen twenty-nine. For the town to scramble to make a zoning change right after the state doing their legislature, doesn't make any sense. I don't know if you're trying to get ahead of it, but making lots smaller, I mean, every lot isn't that buildable to begin with. And you're trying to change the setbacks, you know, I mean, it's just, you talk about the comp plan and how that needs to come first. So I think you need to take the time, do the comp plan, get the public's opinion, which is the second meeting, where it seems like most people here are against zoning changes. You know, and I know change, it's going to happen. There's already a lot of building going on in Water Borough, in every neighboring town. The school district is already pretty stressed at the moment. You know, high school, how many portables do we have at the high school?
Three.
Three?
Four.
Four? Four. So I think before, you know, and I know Limerick last year changed, they did water zoning changes. Anybody? No? Pretty sure, I thought I heard last meeting somebody say Limerick.
They did change some zoning, I don't know what it went to.
Yeah.
They did change, make a change.
And then I heard somebody said they had to put a hold on building permits because it was getting out of?
I think it was a hold on subdivisions at the moment.
Yeah, they did propose that. Subdivisions, which?
Building permits.
Yeah, I mean, so obviously they were getting overwhelmed with the amount of building going on in the town. So for Water Borough to try to make zoning changes, I don't think it's a smart move at this time in date. Without taking the time to really think about it, get the public's opinion, you know, revisit your comp plan, you say it's ten years old, you want to come up with a new one, let's see what this LD eighteen twenty-nine does, you know? It's not like people are, there's not going to be a lot of money or a lot of interest in people building, taking a lot, owning it, sinking a bunch of money into building three structures, and not being able to sell them at this time. You know, I work in the trades, I'm an electrician, it costs a lot to build a structure. So I don't think we need to worry about a bunch of spec houses going up on lots and people coming in and buying them, because, I mean, nobody's, that's a lot of overhead to throw up three structures, have tenants come in and thinking that you're going to get your return on investment just from rent. But I guess it could happen. But I think we need to take the time, come up with a new comp plan, really look at the impact on the infrastructure of the town, the school district, and everything else before we start thinking about making lots smaller to allow more building, especially to such a big zone. I mean, it's just too much. If you wanted to maybe change some of it, I could maybe see a discussion about that, but to take forty percent of the town and almost double the amount of available lots, not that they will all be buildable or that all the acreage is usable, I don't see it being a pro at, at any point. That's it.
Thank you.
Now, everybody comment?
Sure.
The, the left side of the F and A zone, some of those lots look terribly small, but they are eighty, a hundred, a hundred and twenty acres. If there are any undersized lots, there were lots of records, lots of records that were before zoning came into effect, I believe nineteen seventy-seven. So perhaps there is, but the majority of them are not. With LD eighteen twenty-nine, now is not the time to be making any zoning changes. And when we revisit the comprehensive plan, maybe it's still what we want and we just ratify what's already there. That's also an option, ratify the existing comprehensive plan. But I do not think now is the time to do any zoning changes.
Just for reference. Uh, am I a little spot over here? This little lot right here, this is a five and three quarter acre lot. This is my lot right here. Okay, that's five and three quarter acres right there.
So on the scale, it's pretty small.
So, yeah, it looks small, but that's almost six acres.
Would you like to speak?
Diane Seward from Bagley Road. I agree, though, her sounds redundant here, but everything has to be looked at as a whole. And this comprehensive plan hasn't been updated. The roads, the infrastructure itself needs, that has to be in effect or a plan put in place for the infrastructure before you start adding all these places. And I agree, I mean, we own thirty acres up on Bagley Road, but a lot of it's not usable. And that's okay, because we're, our backside is conservation and we're, you know, personally, we're okay with that. But if you start adding three, 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 and you've got your school systems, you've got the fire department, you've got the MFC, I mean, it's a, the whole thing needs to be looked at as a whole, not just, I want to change the zoning to, to get three acres. And like I said, I'm redundant with what everybody else is saying, but I think that needs to be looked at first.
Thank you.
Yes, my name's Chris Peck, and I own a home out on Middle Road, and I've owned my home out there for over fifty years. I came to Waterboro because of the natural beauty and the open space, and I'm absolutely against any of these proposed changes. There hasn't been a consensus at these meetings for these changes. What about our school system? What about the roads? What about the new state mandates? Honestly, I think it's a very bad time to consider any of this proposal. Thank you.
Do, are we gonna read those now?
Yep, so. Mr. Salai, um, emailed the other day, but decided that he wanted to speak this evening. Um, I can still read the email that he sent the other day for a record, or can I attach it to the minutes?
Uh, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Just attach it.
Okay. Um, I've received, and I apologize if I butcher the last name, um, Pat O'Reilly. Okay. Um, dear planning board, as I am unable to attend the meeting this evening on ten fifteen of twenty-five, I want the record to reflect that I am opposed to changing the zone density to three acres and reducing the setback requirements for farm and agricultural zone properties. I firmly believe that changing the zone will completely change the rural character and charm of Waterboro. Our town has a history of agriculture and forestry that must be preserved. We do not want cookie cutter subdivisions and apartment buildings crammed into the hills of Waterboro. Let's be honest, once you allow a massive change such as this in zoning, the floodgates will be open and the rapid, random, and ill-planned development will occur. Let's not become a quote-unquote Sanford, where there's willy-nilly overbuilding, crowded houses and businesses on top of each other, and a once rural area ending up in the designation as a city. While managed growth of the town is important, we must not approve this. Keep the rural flavor of Waterboro. As an owner of property in the F and A zone, I strongly oppose this proposal. Thank you for this opportunity to be heard. Sincerely, Pat O'Reilly, resident. Also having email from Stephen Posel. Um, I am not in favor of changing the ordinance. Doug Foglio Senior said at the last hearing, it's been working for over fifty years, why change it? Thank you.
So this, that was it Angela, right?
Yep.
Okay, um, so that being said, we will close the public hearing. Thank you. Um, so next on the agenda is old business, FA, AR zone amendment proposal, Stephen Everett.
Providing that.
So we have to make a proposal back to the.
A recommendation.
Recommendation, make recommendations, the word goes in the front, okay.
Can we do that here and now?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Just a recommendation.
Just a recommendation. Before, our recommendation back to the.
But, um, all four of us might be different.
Okay.
That's, yeah.
So do you wanna hear individually?
Sure.
Or if anybody wants to share or they don't.
I mean, I'll start and say that I recommend that, um, we keep it the way it is. Not to make any changes to.
Right, your personal opinion, I understand that, but we need to make a recommendation whether or not we're moving this back to the, um.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The select board.
It automatically goes back to the select board. We're just saying what we recommend goes back to them, whether we approve or, or deny, or what we think the select board's.
Okay.
Or hold, or.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, you're taking.
So what you said is.
Yeah, you're taking a stance in your recommendation.
Apparently.
Right. So, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can make it a motion.
You could make it a motion, I think I can take it.
Well, listen to the rest of them.
Right.
Right.
I'm trying to guide you a little bit, yeah, but, uh.
I'm just not sure what we are.
So what do you guys think?
I'll go next. I don't think it's, um, my place to be everybody's voice, so I think there's enough people that are against this, um, so that we should not make a decision at this time. And I'm, I don't think we should make a decision. There's not enough, there's not enough information.
Do I need to make a motion?
I don't, I don't know if I wanna make a motion. I think I'm weighing heavily on LD eighteen twenty-nine as well. And I'm listening to the people of the town. We don't know what that's gonna be. You said they're still making changes, that they're still battling out certain things, so when it comes to us, it could look different than what we think it is now.
I've seen the draft rulemaking, uh, it is available. It's, uh, fairly hard to find, but if, um, if you go on the state website, you can find the draft rulemaking for, for this law. It doesn't change, it doesn't really change anything based on what the bill already says. Like, it didn't change my perception of how it would impact, um, the communities that I work with, so.
Okay, so we can ninety percent say that this is probably how it's gonna be?
Yeah.
You're confident in that?
Yeah. I have heard that there might be a fix-it bill in the next legislation that, like, tries to amend certain things that the rulemaking can't change, but that they realize they don't think are worded very well in the original bill. But that's even more out of our control, um, and we won't know for a long time.
So that's another reason. This is just saying, that just echoes what I said.
Yeah.
That there's not, we don't know how we're gonna look. So for me right now, I would leave no, not to make the change.
Jill.
That's, that's where I stand, that's where.
Well, I'll just make it easy and make a motion, um, that the planning board, due to LD, what is it, eighteen?
Eighteen twenty-nine.
Eighteen twenty-nine, due to that, um, and, uh, our lack of up-to-date comprehensive plan, uh, that I make a motion that we recommend this not, that the select board not approve, um, this zoning amendment.
I'll second that.
All those paper? Great, thank you.
Correction on the word.
Okay.
Town council.
Town council, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Stay corrected. Alright, so that takes care of old business. Uh, next, under new business, we have forty, in circle. Loujer, Dimeo, make a statement.
Dimeo.
Dimeo, okay. Uh, Ron Dimeo? If you could. Alright, we've got a proposal for new business, it says.
So I'm looking to, um, I have a couple of garages on the property right now, looking to add two more garages. Um. Behind the existing ones that are there, earlier with the planning board and, and, uh, the fire bomb, right?
Planning, code and, uh, fire.
Code and fire, and, uh, there was some requests that they asked me to, to make some changes, which I did. Um, the reason is I'm before you is because the town has orders that anything, any roofs, any building that's more than twenty-five hundred square feet has to go in front of the land. And this building is more than twenty-five hundred square feet, and that's the reason I made it.
There's two, right?
Correct.
Both, both, right, okay.
Richard.
Uh, I saw it somewhere in here.
Has, has something changed since your memo, was it this meeting before?
Um, I haven't seen anything updated since my memo. I don't think, you didn't send a, a new site plan since.
Yes, I did. I sent a new site plan. It should show, I don't know if that's reflecting it, but it should show, I can tell you.
Is this a new site plan?
Is this your property or Jake's property?
Uh, both, yes.
So this where his existing shop is now?
One is, one is mine.
Oh, this building here, this shop that's there now.
Yes, I own this, he owns this.
Oh, yeah, then there's a.
This is a breezeway that goes through.
Oh, okay, so, okay, I thought, okay.
Yep.
Was it, was it a race track or something?
It's gone. That's the new race track.
An old Jake.
Yeah, yeah, that's the new race track, it's gone.
Yeah.
So I believe this is the updated, is that, I can't see without my glasses, but does it say?
October one. Yeah, this is the updated.
Okay, yeah, but I believe it is. That's the update, yeah, that's the updated.
Yeah, I did see that.
With the changes that were requested.
Okay.
Yes, yes, I did see that. Um, can I say a couple things?
Yes, sure, just one.
Yes, uh, he made all the changes we talked about, the staff review committee, I think they look great. Uh, no concerns with the things that we had talked about there. Um, notice that the applicant requests a waiver for the standard about lighting, and then also a waiver for the submission requirement to provide the location, direction, and type of outdoor lighting. And, um, I, when I was looking at the site plan again, um, and the application, you describe the type of lighting you'll use as residential exterior lights downcast, which is great, that's the type of lighting we wanna see, because it's not, um, casting outward and being a nuisance. Um, so my opinion is that with that statement and an example of that kind of lighting that you plan to use, that you'll likely meet that review standard, and so you don't need a waiver for it. Um, and then if you provide that example and then a couple of, um, uh, like,
Photos?
Uh, a couple of photos, but also just a couple of points on your site plan showing where the outdoor lights will likely be.
Yeah, it's basically gonna replicate the building that's existing, so I can make a note that the lighting, lighting is gonna be basically the same as what's there.
Yeah.
Send pictures along, so.
So both waivers are for lighting?
Yes, so both waivers are for lighting. One is for the standard and one is for the submission. And I'm saying, I think the, if the submission is an example of the type of lighting used, it would meet the standard, um, given the description of the lighting that the applicant provided in the application. So I don't think the waivers are necessary, 'cause I think if he provides those materials, then it meets, it would meet the standards. But I just think it would be best to see those.
So postpone our decision until we see that?
Yeah, um, just, just because I know there's not close development now, but, um, it would prevent a problem where, you know, an adjacent property owner builds on their property and you're not using downcast lights in the future, then we don't have, we don't have that issue, um, in the future.
So, so just add to my, my package, uh, the, the smidl, um, pictures and basically a paragraph saying that I'm gonna use the identical lighting.
Yeah, and if you could show on your site plan.
Where they're gonna be.
Yeah.
Yep, not a problem.
Yeah.
So I think I need a motion, right?
So we can approve it and make it a condition? We need to?
No, 'cause we can't prove that we find the standard met without seeing that information.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Um, but that was my only consideration. I thought the rest of it looked, um, looked good.
So can I get a motion to postpone?
I'll make a motion to postpone unfortunately, because we need to see lighting.
That's fine, no problem.
You second, Jill second, okay. All those in favor? Thank you.
Welcome.
Alright, next is minutes of previous meetings, which we do not have. Um, under communication, email from Mark Seldacki regarding, but we already read that. Anything else under communication?
Um, actually, I've had, um, because after I did this, yeah, there's a couple of emails that I sent out regarding a couple of workshops that are upcoming. If anybody's interested, let me know, I can sign you guys up. Um, one of them, two of them are webinars.
Okay, I'll do the.
I can read, I can read forward them.
We talked about our legislative, wasn't there?
I believe one of them was in the legislative.
Yeah.
Um, I think one of them's housing, one of them's legislature.
Housing was yesterday.
Okay.
But it's recorded and we'll be sending it out, so if you wanna listen to it for fun, you're welcome to.
Alright, next, uh, miscellaneous, so listed under miscellaneous, so plug, we still have two open seats on the planning board, so if there's anybody out there in the community that is interested, please, uh, submit an application.
They have a lot of fun.
Yes.
Cheerleader.
It's hard shaping your community.
That's right.
And don't complain on Facebook.
That's right. Anything else under miscellaneous, Angela?
Nope.
Okay, uh, so that leaves a German, so if I get a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.